Anybody, Jake, no one was joining us via?
Thank you. All in person.
All right, so, um, also. Great, just want to state our mission statement in partnership with communities. The mission of the Delaware Platteville School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect, so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong learners. Uh, we have no, we have yes, but no one wants to speak. Um, any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, we, uh, I think we've got the contracts done, so we'll go there. Um, and then what we're gonna do, we'll get in the superintendent report, we're gonna just give it as an administrative cap.
Okay.
Uh, one because, let's face it, we've been spending enough time together, um, just about every night, weekend, and what else not, uh, I think we can do this one together.
Okay, all right, do I have a motion to approve?
Sure.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Just a reminder, all four members, uh, speak loudly when you speak, uh, the microphone is in the middle, it goes over there. We had one comment online, I need to find it on my phone here, that I need to read this evening. Um, this question was sent in by Amy Menhold. How often will DGF be reviewing the click point numbers for changes to elementary learning models? What sort of notice will be provided before a change in the model occurs? Thank you for your question, Amy, that should be addressed when you guys do your COVID talks, so, we'll bring that.
Okay.
All right, um, anybody have any rebel recognition?
I would just like to recognize everybody for, uh, this week, hard work, administration, teachers, staff, for getting the kids into school for this past week, I know it's gonna struggle and, and a lot of meetings and a lot of time, so thank you to our staff and everybody for coming together for that, so.
All right, uh, six point one, technology report, John, it's all you.
All right. I know there's field reports, so I'll keep this brief, but I really kinda wanna talk about two areas, one kind of a tech from a COVID response, and the other one from our operations. Uh, from a COVID piece, I, I think it's worth, I think it's important, I think there's a lot of value on just kinda leading with, since last spring, our staff, the majority of them, have been rock stars on willing to learn different tools. A lot of these tools are changing so fast between the Googles, the Apples, the Schoologys, some of the stuff that we kinda learn and get comfortable with, they are making so many updates due to COVID, and just, I, I appreciate the kind of the can-do attitude on people willing to learn and, and adjust in a very disruptive environment. Um, our two local internet service providers, our two main ones, Arbig and Midcontinent have been really strong partners. They provided free internet last spring for our students and families, and I think that's significant to share because that's clearly their business model, their revenue stream, so to give out their, their profits to help our, our kids out and family, I just, you know, I think that's definitely worth a, a public thank you on that. And then even this fall, they have set up educational programs, so, uh, they got programs set up for our students that if they haven't utilized the federal lifeline, is low as six dollars a month, and that is a, a wired internet connection at home. Uh, and even if families have used some of the federal subsidies out there, uh, they're as low as like fourteen or fifteen dollars. Again, that's a, a wired connection, that's gonna be sufficient to provide multiple, you know, residents, to provide conferencing needs. We do have a handful of families that don't have that connection set up yet, so we've just been kinda having a handful of mobile hotspots, and we're kinda working with those families individually to make sure, uh, we got the right people talking to the right people that fits up Arbig or Midcontinent, to make sure we got those connections set up sooner than later, uh, because they are mobile and they are cellular, so it works the majority of times, but as soon as we start having bad weather, a blizzard, or, or storms, that's somehow a matter of if it'll touch the internet connection, but wind, and try to make sure those families are, are as prepared as possible on that one. Um, we've also had a handful of different training opportunities, uh, since last spring, this August. Uh, Andy Cox was our district tech integrationist and led a lot of those sessions. Uh, he took a position with Morehead Schools, so we are starting this fall, just kinda figuring out the best way to move forward with staff, uh, to provide ongoing training opportunities. Um, in my opinion, staff have a good idea of the fundamentals of some of these tools, but as we get more, more involved with this process, kinda looking at best practices on how to do that, how to use some of the new platforms, we're getting more in-depth questions, which I, I'd love to see. We're just trying to find, uh, the best resources on how to support staff with that. Um, that's realistic, you know, from a support piece, but also making sure we got the right people helping, helping each other out. From an operations perspective, um, the district has invested in wireless upgrades over the summer and increased our internet capacity. Um, and those were both used heavily, day one, hour one, and will be used a lot this year. Uh, that also was able to utilize federal e-bay funds, so about half of that expense was subsidized by federal funding. And it was actually a project that was scheduled to do either this year or next summer, so the timing on that went well, that we're not upgrading just for the sake of using federal funds, it was a good timing piece just with our schedule. Uh, we're gonna need it, because next summer is gonna be even more disruptive with the bond, and it's one thing we can check off and move forward with. Um, student devices, trying to order Chromebooks, really trying to order anything technology this summer, it's been a challenge. The devices we ordered for our students back in June, uh, essentially was turnaround on a ship that was coming back across from China. Uh, Lenovo and a handful of big players essentially partnered with a company that got caught up in a labor dispute. And when that happens, all that equipment was essentially rejected at the, whatever shipyards they, they import that equipment on, and they have to rebuild, they mean Lenovo, is rebuilding their distribution centers, and it's on a first come, first served basis, so I reached out to every vendor that I knew, and just the sheer demand of these devices, you know, with COVID in general, it's disruptive. But the country, Japan, bought every device, bought a Chromebook for every one of their students in the entire country, so you'd have orders of ten thousand, twenty thousand Chromebooks as you're talking to a person on the phone, and they're gone, literally, you know, on the phone, so. It's a first come, first served basis, so the equipment from in June, they are hoping to have that by November. I'm hoping that will come sooner, but we're kinda at that, you know, their mercy on how that works. Uh, what we've done is we've repurposed some older devices, so we have begged, borrowed, stolen, any type of device we can make work, we'll make it work. Uh, but it's definitely been a, an interesting summer on that front. Um, and we just continue to keep plugging away with tickets and, and, and help all, anywhere we can, if it's from staff, to parents, to students, I, it's been a, again, an interesting summer, but we've been in homes and trying to help remote, you know, residential wifi and internet connections, but I like where we're going, it does get better each day, uh, like anything else, it just takes time and experience, but we just kinda continue to keep moving forward, so. I'll open up the questions if there are any.
No, just thanks for all your hard work with your staff. Uh, who sent a formal thank you to Arbig and Menhold?
Um, not a formal one, but I did go out and went on record between some social media, Google, and I told, I reached up to both of them, said, "Do you need a personal reference and wanna use my name and title?", I, I said, "By all means, let's, let's do that", because I, I, I can't emphasize enough how, in, how important that was for our families that truly needed.
Yeah.
But even how they took that approach, it was, especially last spring, hey, this is really for qualified, qualified families, but we'll worry about those logistics later, we'll just get that internet set up and running, and we'll worry about all the other moving parts later on. They were rock stars on making sure that internet's ready for that, and that really helped us this fall, just, just because a lot of those families that didn't have it, they kinda figured some of that stuff out, you know, over the summer, so our number of mobile hotspots, knock on wood, is not as high as it was, you know, last spring, but I know that continues, you know, no matter a day or two, so, uh, definitely helped us. We're in a better position this fall because of that.
Great.
Thank you, John.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jake can't get the computers, a pretty good chance we're not gonna get it.
Uh, six point two, transportation records, I made here tonight, or?
No, and it's really just, you know, going through the contracts, because that's what everything's, you know, she's still working, you know, one week into it, so it's adjusting and, and trying to figure out what is that gonna look like if, you know, uh, as people are making changes in whether they're coming or not, whether they're going distance, and, and some of them are, are changing their minds on that. So, um, she's under a lot of stress with that, so I think even having these contracts done is gonna help her with, uh, just the work that she's doing with vendors.
With the transportation, maybe you guys wanna, um, kinda segue into this and, uh, couple of negotiations with transportation?
Uh, we had a meeting last Thursday night, did, oh, two and a half hours, um, but we met with the vendors, Bob Keel, um, each family and center. Um, we had a very good conversation, um, we came to an agreement on their, um, contract, and, if I don't, anything you wanna add?
The one thing Brian had met earlier with them, you know, they've come with some really high numbers, and he said that wasn't gonna work, you know, so they sent him a proposal, which we looked at, and we said, "That's too high", we gave a counter-proposal, they caucus, we caucus, and when we came back, we were both just about identical on what our numbers were and what it was, so. The only thing, I think you guys heard Amy, you didn't hear, is it was only setters that needed that extension of fourteen years on the bus, so the setters don't have it.
Penders, I'm sorry, yeah. Only one, and, and then I met with them, I think I met with them, Friday we got, so that was Thursday night, Friday we got the redline versions out to them, uh, to look through, and the thing we knew we couldn't get to them Friday was all the distance. I, uh, so, that they, they got this morning, uh, we'd already been in communication over the weekend trying to work through the details on that, so for the verbiage with it, and, um, and this morning we met, I met with them at nine o'clock, just to go over the second set of revisions based on the distance, and we met for about an hour or so, and then we just had one more revision, or one more thing they had in there, made copy of that, and they've signed all of the contracts, so. Um, you know, to, when you think about, in a short time span, you know, there was, yeah, that was very, you know, very compressed meetings in a short time period, but, uh, I thought it went, I thought it went very well.
Yeah, I was really pleased, so. A big thank you to them again for just their kissing.
They just wanted to be treated fairly, you know, and we wanted to try to offer what we can, and, you know, we listened to their concerns, this thing about, you know, with my lecture. The extra fare was probably the bigger issue, we'll just watch and how you handle that, if you don't have any trips at all, you know, and they kinda said, "Well, the coaches don't get paid, we shouldn't get paid", type of thing, so they were fair about it, so.
Thank you guys for your time and efforts on that. Laura, did you have anything to add to it, or?
No, I, um, was brought onto the transportation committee and found out, I think it was that day, or the day before, that there was a meeting, I was surprised.
I have another meeting.
I was, you know, it, you know, it's all the learning curve, and, you know, I, I said to Amy afterwards that, you know, it didn't even occur to me that the, with the bussie, how that would affect them if there's no change, there's, you know, the field trips, all those things, the time to negotiate down to the mile, and just all these same things, just never, never occurred to me. And, so it's, it's, it's incredible to learn how, there's so many fine details that go behind the scenes that people don't know about, and.
Like I say, they can't get drivers, they wanna get drivers, you know, the fifty percent rate with distance learning, you know, costs a lot of money to own a license and insure a bus, you know, so that's their overhead type of thing, you know. I think a lot of us at the higher one or two drivers still time just to keep them on in case they need them for something, so they're paying them year-round. But there are a lot of hidden costs that we don't know about, so.
And, and there is, there's a lot of concern. This morning's meeting, you know, the reality of, of the pandemic was really getting home with vendors, because as they were processing, and, you know, many of them didn't know the details as far as on the quarantine, and, and what else not, how much time it would, would take, and so, you know, example of one of the vendors, they've got kids in the system, uh, both of them drive, and all of a sudden, if they're quarantined at home, there's two routes, and there's their income. You know, that's, not only do they have to stay at home, and then, as I explained, you know, you could have, and this thing could mushroom on you, where all of a sudden you got X amount of days, and because of the child at home, and now you've got your other half, one of you, and then you're still, if you're at home, and what else not, hopefully you don't have to be, but, you know, you're gonna have to come up with plans. And then we made, had a discussion about, in the same way that our COVID numbers with students may force where we have to go distance, in the same way we know that our personnel, whether it be our teachers, our parents, all of our adults that work within the buildings, uh, our employees at DGF could shut it down also if we run into those issues and not having adults. And the third thing that can shut us down is if we cannot get against school. So, uh, you know, when, when you realize how much of an impact each of these components have, to be able to operate school systems, um, you know, there's, uh, it puts a lot of pressure and, and stress on people. So, good discussions, so.
Okay, thank you, let's move on to six point three, board committee reports. Uh, David, you wanna give us the one on negotiations?
Sure. Um, fiscal personnel.
Oh, negotiations, fiscal personnel, all together, you go.
Yeah, we had a couple of meetings actually, and, um, we're here, we're talking a little bit about the revenue from COVID additional sources, some of that, and how we're looking at, at that to maximize and create flexibility with, um, use of those funds. We talked about the addition of adding, um, distance learning liaison for six and twelve, and then especially added distance learning positions. Um, I, I probably get into that a little bit more, but.
Yeah, we'll get those on the agenda, so we'll answer any questions on those, too.
We've talked a little about comp stack construction and additional ones that they've had put in, um, due to the one-year delay. They were originally looking at about a six-month, um, period of work, and essentially doubled that time, so they're, um, they've got additional expenses that we're gonna look at, and they're gonna need Brian and, um, staff to take a look at what that looks like, but there will be some additional fees. Back to the transportation vendor contracts, what we just talked about, and then, um, DGF EM came to us with the full memorandum of understanding, looking at, um, some additional items that we're gonna take a look at tonight. Basically, there's, I'll just kinda go over the areas, uh, to deal with the coaching situations, and looked at some of the different, um, issues with things being canceled, and acknowledging that a lot of the coaches, um, head coaches put in a lot of time outside of the season. And so, we're trying to address that to be fair to the coaches, um, and we'll get into that a little bit more, you know, and so. Uh, also, dealing with subbing, there's some really good ideas, subbing and leave, creating, uh, a leave bank. So, folks with, teachers with, um, per se and leave, have some additional options, people can donate to the leave bank. Uh, some additional ideas for subbing, they help increase the use of prep time for subbing, is also very helpful. Some things on classroom time and sick time, but we'll get into that a little bit more in detail, but, uh, some good things were brought up around that. That's pretty much what we talked about, I don't know.
Uh, we also talked just briefly about, um, how if we're looking at, on an additional social workers for middle school, high school, go distant learning pieces, because we know a lot of kids are suffering. So that is another area we looked at, potentially using some of that. Here's another.
Yeah. Well, that sounds like we've covered all of it, so. Any other committees? Um, do we have a district oversight after our school board meeting?
Uh, no. No, we don't.
No, we, we did the day after the last school board meeting, so we have another district oversight meeting tomorrow.
Um, the biggest thing that we went over was, um, you know, obviously, it being under budget by two point five million, you know, looking at that list, and the list that we're kinda pushed off to the side, what do we want to do with that excess money? Uh, it was good discussion, um, there was four, four topics, um, that they were gonna take back and see if they can give prices on. Um, the, the one in particular, we talked a lot about, what is our number one goal in our school district, and the, and part of this bond was safety and security of our students and staff. Um, and looking at that small courtyard over here, um, in the high school, that's the number one priority, that we, we identified as a group that we would like to give a praise on, but not only provide safety and security, but other educational opportunities for our students, so. Um, then we were looking at, um, some storage for the Suburbans, and they can't remember what site it was at, was it the one that women bring?
Um, we got storage both, so what would be the, the, the storage building for all the athletic equipment, and where else not, so we don't have, have that all in here, and then, of course, what we're gonna do with, at the Dilworth site with the house property, and whether we look to put that as parking lot, we're also have, have a transportation shed, so we've got some place, so all the Suburbans aren't sitting out all winter long, and we know that a lot of those, uh, those transports, the, the one-on-one transportation and small group transportation is with a lot of our youngest kids, so it just makes sense as we have that. An elementary site, they have Suburbans right there, so it doesn't make sense they have that extra mileage, especially if they're just sitting on the coalfield in the first place. So, you know, we've got those things, and we got H V, and the other piece, uh, with that money that we'll definitely have to address, and, and they'll have the numbers for us, um, is the fact of the earthwork over here at this site, because of what we asked you down the, on the north end, and it's, you know, they'll walk through the process, but, um, everything that I'm hearing so far is, the engineers, everybody is saying, "Yep, you're gonna have to subcut, subcut it, put in, uh, drainage tile and, and a number of other things", so we've got that one, and that is to the tune of two hundred and some thousand. And then, of course, we have the issue with the Dilworth site with Excel, where they want to move all of the power lines, put them underground, and, and, uh, they think it's the perfect time to do it all the way to past Cool, and have DGF pay for the whole thing. So, we're going to have some discussion, because we, uh, we're gonna agree to disagree on, on that thought process, so. So, it's nice to get some of these negotiations done, because the other negotiations like that was probably more up David's wheelhouse, you know, to be bluntly honest, and, and Will and Debbie Waters involved in that potentially, because we're not getting this stuff for a hundred thousand dollar bill, because they think it's, what a perfect time for them to vary all that, when the only thing we have to do is have it varied along the building we're on. So, yeah, you have politics, and you got all those fun things.
Uh, and the, the one other item that we asked them to, um, look into is the theater upgrades, as far as lighting and sound in, um, the theater. So those are the core items, the courtyard, the buildings, the storage, HVAC, and then the theater. So, we didn't wanna go through the whole list and say, "Get a price for everything", we just identified as a group, these are the, um, the pieces that we wanted to look at. And then they also talked about, um, maybe at, towards the end of the project, if we have dollars left, do we wanna, you know, do some, um, hardware changes, do we wanna paint the, paint the hallways, do we wanna maybe put the lockers in, in this, this main corridor, the, not the meat park here, but the, the older park, into some of those things, but we just thought, "Let's start with the, the big one, and that's the tour guide".
So, we are going to paint the halls.
Okay, now you are gonna paint the halls.
We are going to paint the halls.
So, the lockers?
Um, I don't know if that must come, the hallways have come up a few times, so I really wanna make sure that, um, we don't have that going out tomorrow, that we might do the, we're doing the halls.
We're doing the halls, okay. Uh, but there's just some, you know, just like little details, and that, that stuff will continue to come, um, up as the project moves along. Brad, you've been through a few of the records, or?
Yeah.
They come, come the little, little nickel and dime stuff at the end, and it's just very relieving to know that we have extra money, because, um, the people that we've hired didn't wanna put it up, so, we are very lucky, very fortunate on that, so.
The other thing they were gonna look in for us, Lindsay brought up, or else I wouldn't, is to go back and figure out which bleachers they ordered, so we, make sure we get wide, spacious bleachers, so.
Yeah, they bid the small, they bid the short ones, and.
And we said, "No way",
No way, no way.
Even if it cuts down the capacity, we want.
Yeah.
Wide space, right?
Yeah.
Good thing, that was actually interesting.
Yeah.
What time is that meeting tomorrow?
All right, two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Are you gonna be, are you?
Probably still gonna be sitting in a dentist chair, so I may not make it right away.
I'll, I'll be able to attend, I'll be able to be there, are you gonna be able to be there?
Yeah.
It's in the morning, I could've done it, but afternoon when I got one o'clock, two hour appointment in the chair, so we'll see when I get done.
Okay. All right, let's move on to six point four, so this is going to be administration, uh, basically COVID report, so Brian, go ahead and start.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the thing I just wanna start out with is, just to give a little idea, since, since we know that this is recorded and the public is, is able to look at this later, you know, I've had a, a number of emails and communications from people asking, you know, "What is that point that you make that decision to make that switch?", and it isn't one data point, you know, I think that's, that's real critical for people to understand. We have, uh, one of our data points is a two-week report that we get from the Minnesota Department of Health. We also get instantaneous ones that are from Minnesota Department of Health. Um, that creates a, uh, to be honest, that creates a, a lot of confusion for people, because they assume the one is less accurate, because it's quote, "Older data", well, it's more stable data, because that's why they're doing these two trends to look at, to be honest. Uh, Thursday, Thursday I had, uh, either Thursday or Friday, they get around together, but had a, uh, we have our superintendent meeting with, uh, the commissioner's office, and, um, had a discussion about these data points, and how it creates some issues for school districts, and then we had the same discussion Friday morning, and the good thing was we had representatives from M R E A, M S B A, and, uh, the executive director for M A S A, which is our superintendent group, all, it's a nice thing about, about these Google meets, you can get a lot of those people all of a sudden to show up. And so, we had all of them there, and it just happened that Deb, who was our executive director, her and Jeremy and I were on the floor, anybody else jumped on, and I brought up to them, I said, "One thing that would be helpful is", I said, "It, it doesn't help us one bit when M D E is one department at the state level, and then M D H, and one's putting out certain information, and the other one's putting out different information", I said, "It creates havoc for us as school districts", um, Heidi told me today, "What's the latest one on the instantaneous, forty-some percent?" So, when you hear that, and people hear that, they're just assuming, "Well, you gotta go distance, you're gonna be going distance quickly, because you're gonna hit fifty", and again, it's one data piece, and that's all it is, and you gotta look at what the population is that's actually having the COVID, so we have to factor all of that. Uh, I can tell you that when I showed, uh, Deb and Jeremy, and, "Here's how we're tracking everything internally", because we, we keep one document that has all of our students, what date they're, you know, we're, we know exactly when they're supposed to be quarantined from this time period to this, our staff the same way, so that sets up for us, uh, the time periods potentially for having to go distance, because if you see you're gonna have this staff out for, until this particular date, if you're gonna get yourself productively planning, and then we found out from regional support, that once we do the investigations, that one thing that they look, look at is if you have over fifty cases, um, and it's not meaning that they're all, um, positives, it just means that they cannot be in direct mode. So if you take the combination of your staff and your students, and you hit fifty, then you're going. then you're going to start having those discussions. Well, as of last week, we knew that, uh, while I was having the meeting on Thursday, and I had that spreadsheet up as I'm talking to the other supers. And all of a sudden I'm watching that live spreadsheet because we had three more names, just like that during the meeting. At that time, we were twenty some. And the last time I looked today, and I'm sure it's not the final numbers. Fifty-two, yeah, so it's changed that much. It was forty-seven when I left home this afternoon and now it's fifty-two, just on the students. So, you know, I, I, I have absolutely zero hesitation about the decision and the process if people are wondering. Uh, Friday late afternoon, I was on, uh, conversations with, uh, uh, Kayla Walton, who is of course our, uh, county, uh, nurse that we hire for those services through Clay County Contracted Services. And, uh, the next thing I knew, I had a second meeting with them at seven thirty that night. And we got regional people and, and we started walking through, here's, here's all the things that you may want to consider. And so we were from that point on, looking at the possibility that we may have to make, move to distance. And we basically, as an admin cabinet, spent the weekend trying to go through data, looking at things, talking with, uh, MDH personnel, um, and Clay County personnel. And then Sunday morning, uh, nine thirty, we met and we just walked through the plan. And on Saturday, all the principals were working on with the idea that this may happen. What's the transition? How are we going to do it? How are we going to have things ready for Monday? And I can say without hesitation, I think it, it went. I didn't get one phone call today about the transition, which is unusual. Because you think of a storm and we're trying to walk through this just like any other storm in the winter. We're in watches, we're in warnings. We get closer with the numbers, we're a warning. And we may have to make that transition on a day. All of a sudden, one morning, we may have five staff members that all of a sudden got added to the list. Not that they're positive, but they're quarantined. And we may have to transition just like we do with the winter storm and say, all the kids are out at noon and we're putting the plan together. We have it set up the same way. So I am so proud of this admin cabinet and their leadership and working with their leadership teams on identify the problem, chunk it down, work the problem, keep working the problem. Who can take on these different components? And I, I can say in my career, this is the most functional group as far as in, in difficult situations, working together as a team and, and working together. Just this whole board, the way everybody's approaching it, um, is outstanding. And, and these are tough times. But I'm going to quit and let the, I really want the admin team to talk about what they're doing, how they're doing things with their site. Last thing I want to say, because I want to get it on record in the recording. Some of these things can be alleviated very quickly if everybody follows guidelines. And so I am going to ask again, and we're going to put communication out. Parents, you can help with this. If you have a son or a daughter, or somebody in your family that's been tested, keep your kids home for the safety of everyone. If you're waiting on test results, do not bring your kids to school because it's exposing other kids. And then when the tracing happens that they've got to try to figure out, then we got to send more kids home because now they've been in proximity. And that's why we're up at fifty-seven, to be bluntly honest, is because we got tracing from some events that have taken place. And we need you to keep your kids at home if you're waiting for test results. Otherwise, we're going to be doing this, we're going to be going back and forth through this all year long. So, now I'll shut up.
Brian, does it strike about changing some of the quarantine rules? I mean.
Um, there, David, one thing that, and we haven't seen the new flow chart yet. On either Thursday or Friday, they came out, uh, with clarification about the flow chart as far as on the decision-making tree. Now, that's published on just about all the sites. So on MDE, MDH, the county, everybody has it. So the chart is still the same one from, um, August thirty-first. But they came out with clarification this week because, you know, granted, I'm sure the department was getting a lot of heat because of the amount of kids that were having to stay at home and, and what else, not in this whole ten day, fourteen day. And does it need to be the whole family? So one thing they have done is they have decreased the amount of people that have to be quarantined based on proximity issues. So we're waiting for that change to show up. Um, like I said, they're still working, it'll come out this week sometime, I'll shut up. Heidi, Margot, everybody else, anybody else? There we are. I mean, there's a lot of issues that everybody has to go through on this. Uh, in the same way, Laura, when you were talking about the transportation and the detail part, you know, you start putting all these things together and then at building level and different grades and all the, all the personnel and, and then, uh, all the special services. It's amazing to try to get all those things to work well in a just-in-the-moment.
All right. Um, this is what I'm going to be referring to. Now, this is a, a very, very fluid document right now. Joe and I spent some time last spring at the end of distance learning with our, with the survey, parent survey, staff survey, talking about, you know, what really was it successes and what were challenges. Um, plus we've had discussions with our site leadership teams over the last three, four, five months, whatever it's been, you know, how would we like this to look for distance learning for elementary kiddos in the fall? So yesterday, Joe and I compiled all of the data. We looked at, we looked at all sorts of different aspects. And we put together this document. Um, it's completely not complete, if that makes any sense. Um, we need, we are meeting with our site leadership teams, combined site leadership teams on, um, Wednesday for them to look at this for the first time. Um, we've, again, we've talked about it, we had bullet points and lots of notes and, and those kinds of things, but we just decided it needed to be formally in a document. So what I wanted to share with you, um, tonight, you know, you know, Joe and I had a lot of discussions yesterday and we talked about what do we want distance learning to look like for fall? If and when our littles get to that point? Um, and we wanted to just highlight a few of our goals and look at that data and really focus on a few things. So I'm not going to go through all of this with you, I just want to point out a few things in this packet. Um, so our goals, and, and we know that a lot of what happened in March wasn't effective. It was, it was as effective as it could be. Our teachers rocked it, they did an awesome job on short notice, not even thinking that this was going to be a thing. So commend, commend, commending them completely. But now knowing that we've had time to kind of make this better and more successful, we've really taken that time. Um, so I want to go over just our quick goals. Um, daily student teacher interaction via email, some kind of Google support, whether it be meets, classroom, um, phone calls, et cetera. We feel it's very important as to our, our teachers and the information that we got from our parents that we have a contact, some contact every day with a staff member, whether it be a classroom teacher, special education teacher, an interventionist, something to keep that connection. So that was, that was, this is one of our goals. Um, another thing, a goal is, um, to make distance learning better this fall. Scheduled office hours for our staff, um, to assist learners that need it. Um, whether that be social emotional, whether it be math, whether it be social studies, whether it be just to talk, to make sure that our, our staff have those office hours. And to look at, you know, what we can do and how we can make it work so we have time when parents are home. We know that it's not feasible to have all of our littles do their work between the hours of seven thirty and four. We need, really need to think of that, parents working, daycares, those kinds of things. So really having that openness in those office hours per se for our, um, community stakeholders to get a hold of our staff. Um, monitoring the communication of the student progress. So just that communication piece alone and just having those conversations, um, us administratively with our parents, whether that be meetings or, um, or office hours of our own, supporting our teachers. So that communication is a huge tool, um, that, that we just have to, we have to really focus on with our parents. Uh, monitoring, um, and looking at varying assessment tools, um, what's feasible during distance learning and what's not feasible during distance learning. The assessment is so important, if we're going to keep the rigor up, we need to know where these kids are and we need to know that data, the data points to get them to that next step. Uh, we focused a lot in, in March, April, May on review and practice. We, we tried to move ahead with some stuff, but it was very, very difficult. Technology-wise, um, time-wise, level-wise for our kiddos. So that's going to be on the top of our list, that rigor of instruction. Um, and that commitment that we as staff give to, um, them. Now, we all know that at-home physical learning materials are going to be provided for K to, K to two stu-, K through two students for the simple fact that we don't have enough technology for them. If we were to go into, um, distance learning before our computers get here. Um, and then that online content is going to be focused on Google Classroom, Google Meets, the Google Suites, um, instruction through, for our third to fifth grade, three, three to five. Sorry, my brain's a little mushy. Um, focusing on the, the flexibility of teachers. Um, really focusing on that differentiation piece and the flexibility for them to be there for the kids and teach in different ways if need be. Um, and then really focusing on how our special ed, uh, our EDL teachers, our interventionists and other staff, parent professionals can be of assistance to teachers and staff during this time service. So those are really kind of our focus goals, um, for this. Now, if you go through the packet, um, again, we really, we really worked out on laying out the guidelines for teachers, so the expectations for teachers, so everybody's consistent with that. But we also have laid out the guidelines for parental support. Um, and it's, and again, it's, it's establishing routines and expectations, defining that physical space, making your house an area for, um, for learning. And the feedback that we got was parents wanted that. They wanted to know exactly what was expected of them. Um, so then, go, just going through, um, we also laid out the specific roles and responsibilities. So if you see a table in like this, um, it looks like this, of what is an admin's role during distance learning um, in this fall? The roles of the classroom teachers, social workers, special ed, paras, specialists, special services, technology department, et cetera. We really want to be specific on knowing our roles. And then again, the, now the student roles and the responsibilities. And they're going to be a little bit different because of grade level, primary and intermediate. So those are going to be different. Um, some considerations on there regarding like the technology. Um, and then the last, oh, approximate times for parent-teacher, so if you're in one of the back pages, the, um, parent-led, parent or teacher-led instruction, kind of that guided instruction, but then times for independent practice that are more rigorous to, you know, to make sure that our kids are still getting the best that they can. Um, and then lastly, some information regarding our, uh, daycare. Again, it just, it talks about the executive order twenty-eight-two. And about, you know, we, we will have, if our, if our schools are in distance learning, our elementary schools, um, and high schools and middle schools are in elementary, or distance learning, we will provide daycare, um, at no charge for our essential workers, our tier-one essential, or I think they're called critical workers now. Um, and then, um, so just some of the logistical things regarding that. So who qualifies, where it's going to be, um, the times, who's going to be supervising, meals, et cetera. Um, so again, Joe and I just, we, we took all of our data, put this together yesterday. It is a fluid document right now. We're meeting with our teams on Wednesday to talk about it and get some feedback. And hopefully we'll have something super solidified soon, in case we need it. Questions regarding elementary stuff?
Is this something that's really going to go to elementary parents, once it's finalized?
This, yep, once we, once we get the okay from the site leadership team, admin team, and we talk about it, absolutely. This will be going to teachers, it'll be going to staff, it'll be going to parents. I think it's really, it's really important for everybody to know their role in what they, what they're going to provide their kids. So I think it's very imperative that, that this, this document will be shared. And hopefully it'll, well, hopefully it'll stand to twenty pages, there's a lot of information we've got, so.
I like that it's on the one area when you break it down. It, it's just a guide to go off.
Exactly.
It's just a guide. Because sometimes it's very cumbersome to try to go on the internet and hit this tab and hit this.
Yep.
If everybody had this, they can look in their walls, have it on their kitchen table or wherever they need it.
And we, we put it on our website, I have the hot links in here too. I don't even, is that what they're called now? Hot links, Jake, know what they're called? If you click on it, hyperlinks, hot links in the olden days. Hyperlinks everything to all of our school documents and all kinds of, hot links? Maybe I'm hungry, I don't think I've eaten today, so anyway. Other questions?
One thing that's, that's important for everybody to remember, unlike the middle school and the high school, you know, we're able to transition immediately. And learning took place today, instruction took place today. That was a concern I think a lot of people had. How much downtime is there going to be before you can do this? And because this was an easier transition than hybrid, they could do that right away. The chances of the elementary going from direct to distance over a weekend are pretty, pretty slim. And I would say it's, it won't happen, it can't really happen. Because the state gives us trans, transition time. So at the very least, we're going to have days to be the trend, be able to do the transition when the elementary has to move all the way from direct to distance. So there will be time, we got to get the daycare, all of those things. And people need to be able to all of a sudden decide that, do I have to stay home and all that? That's major changes for families. So this is not going to be rushed, so to speak, and it won't be a quote, trigger, automatic trigger as far as we get to thirty-two or we get to this. So please, when you, if you get some people, a little bit, anxiety levels blow up, where they're wondering about the elementary doing a quick transition, that will not happen overnight, okay?
Brian, you talked about the state giving us, those transition time, but maybe they're not mandating that?
No.
No, I mean, we just.
We've got a lot to say on that, just like we did on, on this one. You know, we, uh, we knew we could do it over the weekend.
Yeah.
Um, you know, once they got the feedback from the principals that, no, we could, our teachers are ready to go. I mean, they can do this right away Monday. Great, wonderful, start thinking about it. And like I said, yesterday morning, I mean, just locked everything in. So it'll take a little bit more trans, transition time with the elementary just because of mold.
Any other questions for elementary?
I gotta add one point to.
Oh, thank you, Joel.
Credit or offense to Margot spearheaded this. She's being very generous. We did several meetings together, but when it comes to this document, she did a fantastic job. They work well as a team though. This is why we have. Appreciate it. This is one of the reasons that we were able to have the kids having a player upfront because that had so many different steps also. And I love it when they're, you know, you get people working together and who can take this on the best. And, you know, you look at all that stuff that was accomplished, so.
We are, we are a very, very good team, we balance each other out very well. And thank you, Joel, but you've had a lot to do. Yes, and the playground is awesome. So, all right, good.
Thank you, Margot.
Absolutely.
Heidi, you're up.
So I was sitting over here kind of giggling a little bit. I was thinking about mine and Joel's conversation last Friday. Um, we were both feeling a little bit, uh, and he's laughing, relieved. We were thinking, oh boy, we're finally going to have a weekend where we're going to. Because since July thirtieth, it's been, um, you know, pretty much straight through. And so we were, we were talking Friday that we were going to have a great weekend. Um, maybe relaxing and doing a few other things that adults like to do, so, but.
Then I go.
Yeah. So last week, um, I speak for both Wayne and I because Wayne can't be here tonight. And, um, last week, we both rolled out our hybrid model. And we had the silver group on Tuesday, Wednesday, remote learning, then Thursday, Friday, we had the blue group. And we felt pretty good about it. I mean, there was definitely hiccups, there were some things that went wrong. Um, Joe and I had some fun bussing stuff. I mean, we, we had some things that, that, that we had to work out. But we, we were feeling pretty good about that hybrid. And when we do get back to it, because we are going to get back to it at some point, um, I'm, I'm excited about what we put in place. But as we've been talking about with COVID, we're, our analogy and, and admin team is storms. And, uh, on Friday, the, uh, thunder started to rumble a little bit. And we were getting some wind and some things and, um, our nursing staff have been amazing and. And we were getting some wind or some things and, um, our nursing staff have been amazing and, and trying to keep a surprise with things. And things are coming at them. Not only are they dealing with all this COVID, they're also dealing with, uh, boo-boos. And, you know, people falling on the playground and those type of things. So, uh, they are very, I cannot say enough about how much Kayla and Beth have been helpful. Um, Kayla's helped me walk through a lot of this, and in particular, because I worked with her at the Dilworth site. So very, very appreciative of her. On last week, when we, um, the last email I sent to, uh, the middle school staff, I think, I think it was either Tuesday morning or Monday night, was teach like, uh, this week, like you never know when you might go into distance learning. So essentially teach like your pants are on fire. What do you want them to know? What, what if they, the next day couldn't come back from the school? Because that's what happened to us, remember, last spring? What is it that you want them to know? What do you, how, do they need to know how to get into Google calendars, figure out how to do Google Meets? And so I have to give accolades to both the middle school and high school staff. Because literally Brian contacted Wayne and I and we both said, no, we can do this. Like, we have to, we don't want the kids back in the building right now, it's not safe. And so, um, it's not good for the staff, it's not good for the students. And so they were ready to go. And, um, that happened because of people, uh, taking an experience that they had last spring and how could they make it better? There's lots of talks that happened over leadership this summer. Uh, because we were only one step away. Whereas elementary is a little bit further away, we were only one step away from being a, um, full distance learning. So that's why we were climbing that way. Um, I think another thing that really was in our benefit was on Wednesday, we had our trial run, uh, for both the middle school and high school, where we have that shortened schedule and they go every half hour or so, um, to the different core classes. And that, we, Brandon, I took a lot of calls on the same one for parents about how to figure that out. And I figured out some things that I could do better, like get the calendar, uh, the schedule posted on the website, et cetera, and doing some of those things. And I think that really also helped for today going, um, pretty darn well. Um, like Ryan said, we met on, um, Sunday morning. And I think what, what, what always kind of hits me is just that when you bring a group of people together, I am not a health expert. I don't have any desire to do that because mostly because I get sick at first sight of blood. But, um, but we, you know, you get these group of people together and, and, you know, Lindsay was there and you, and you just, and people are really brainstorming and thinking what's best for kids. And from that, that meeting, um, I really left that feeling good about what we were doing. At 11:25, both Wayne and I had staff meetings. We sent it out at, I think, 10:50. We literally sat on the phone together and said, you ready, you ready? And sent it out. Because we really wanted our staff to hear it first, that's fair to them. We're asking them to move, move into a, a different model and they needed to hear that first. So we sent that out together at 11:25, because the letter was set to go up from Mr. Tyson at 11:30. Uh, Wayne and I met with our staff. And we, and we gave them the, um, you know, the, I think they knew something was coming, um, but they, we gave them the, the facts about what it was. And then throughout that day, we worked on communication, we worked on details. And then at 3:30, I asked my specialized team to get back to get together. And I had Special, Marianne joined us and we worked through how we're going to support our specialized students during this time. What were going to be the roles of the paras? So again, on Sunday afternoon at 3:30, there they were, totally voluntary, um, but they were there. And then at 4 o'clock, we, Wayne met with his leadership team right after the staff meeting. I met with my leadership team at 4 o'clock. Uh, Wayne's an overachiever, he had already got some stuff done that he needed to, I needed a little bit more time to work, so we met at 4 o'clock. And then, and then our information went out to active leadership team with their input, with their expertise, with their guidance. Um, we developed the, um, the plan for this week. Again, I've said this before, but those leadership teams are so powerful to work with. Um, because just like our 9:30 meeting, that 4 o'clock meeting, there was some really good feedback that was given to me on what I had prepared for that meeting. So I are very grateful and I know Wayne feels the same way. So today was our day and I made a fool of myself this morning. And I like to make fun of myself because I'm easy to make fun of sometimes. But, so I go down at, uh, to the middle school lobby today and I'm going down to help our little fifth graders catch the shuttle bus. Because it is still only the third day of school, right? So I go down there and there's a couple of them. And I'm thinking, well, where is everybody, right? I knew my middle schoolers, but I was looking for the high schoolers. So I call Miranda and I go, Miranda, what time, does the shuttle bus, did we miss it? The hi-, there's no high schoolers here. She goes, Heidi, are you kidding me? There are no high schoolers today. So, yeah, but, all right, that's just from being extremely tired. So that was, that was, that was me. Um, today, what, what Brian and I did is, uh, I contacted Lake, Lake Country Service Co-op. Because when you switch models, you have to be able to, you have to let the state know, yeah, within 24 hours. And so I'm pretty sure we'll be one of the first customers for doing that. And so, uh, I, I contacted Jeremy and I learned how to do that. I'll do that tonight when I go home. But we have to go into a Department of Ed, um, it's like their education data management system. And go in that and change our learning model for these next few weeks. And it has a period that you can do that. And so, um, we needed to, to do that. Um, the other thing that he wanted to make sure that we were doing is that we were, were reporting our cases to MBE. And, uh, Kayla, because she's also Play County employee, she's been doing that directly for us, which is nice. Because then we don't have to take that extra step. So that is, we actually, in our, um, document that Brian was talking about, it has a call, call list that reports to MBE. So, um, that was the other part. Those are the two things that Jeremy told me today that we needed to make sure that we were getting done. And they will be tonight before, um, I go to bed. But those were the, those were the, um, main things that he said. And then he also wanted me to tell everybody that, that we're rocking it. Those were his words. And so he's our religion, regional support person from the MBE. So, um, that was nice to hear from him, that. Just a other couple of things that I wanted to tell you about, um, I don't know if I told you this last time, but the entire staff was trauma-informed training. And the reason I want to bring that up tonight is, boy, are we seeing how important that is right now. Um, and if you read the 131 document that's part of the MBE sideline, the planning guide, they talk a lot about trauma-informed and SEL. And I'm very grateful for that, that we got the first half of that, the second half will be coming in January. Um, so we had all of our, uh, teacher staff, uh, paras that were able to attend that. Also, Marianne and I met with the school climate cohort representatives from Lake Country Service Co-op, probably about a week ago, two weeks ago, I'm sure they saw. And, uh, we did take a survey, uh, last year that kind of talked about our culture and climate. We were set to have them review it with our staff, like the week that we went into, um, I was going to say lockdown, but that's what it felt like. But, um, when we, when we were shut down last year. So they are going to come back and with our, uh, Wednesday schedules, uh, we're hoping that, I think we're going to try by the end of September, have them share all the survey results with staff via Google Meet. Um, and then they took some time to share with Marianne and I that they had changed the focus of the school climate cohort to be on SEL. Social, emotional for our students, because of our families, because it is so apparent right now with what we're going through that that's important. So our staff will be receiving some training and resources that they can use directly in their work with students. So that is coming too. As Brian said, um, we have around 10, uh, confirmed cases, um, uh, 40-ish, uh, either 14 or pending. Um, so this is serious, serious, serious stuff, folks. Um, if we got to stay open, we got to, and, and me too. I got lax for a while and we all just need to tighten up again. And we want to be in school, we want those kids. Last week felt a lot better than today. Today, today felt lonely and, uh, kind of like last April or May felt. So I'm, I'm really hopeful that we'll really get the kids back in, in this layer, whatever you want to call it, the hotspot will go away and we'll be able to get back into the building. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much, Heidi. I've been busy, busy. I just, as a board and for administration, for those that are watching, I'm going to bring up food service again for families. If you are wanting breakfast or lunch and you have a middle school or a high school, go onto the food service website, fill out a form for each student and they, they will be able to receive yours. You can pick up. So us as a board and administration, I'm like, you know that. Um, also to parents that are viewing, if you are having social and emotional needs at home, please, please, please call your site principal. There are people that will help you. Um, and as always, if, if this, um, incident has caused people anxiety, which we know for some families it has, you do have the option of going to virtual contact your sacred. Uh, any other additions to that, Brian?
Good.
Okay, um, we're moving on to 7.1, approval of minutes. This is our August 24th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Motion carries 6-0. Consent and handout. Claims and accounts. Uh, Sandy, did they put it in the card you there?
Um, yes, and there was, I think they had a chance to look through the board bills. There was some things in there. You had a question about.
I've been asking Joel or something about the scoreboard or something, the baseball field. We have to pay that whole thing and nobody reverses or anything for that?
Correct, that was a capital expense. I was waiting before I gave them advertising. And you can do, uh, all of the levels or whatever. I thought I would wait and see what we are the home of, that's going to. Before, but we have that option though, Ronnie, so I could, you know, it wasn't as massive as the football scoreboard. Um, so I could do that at a later date and basically it would almost be like we got reimbursed for it. Um, but I just chose to, for now, I'm going to wait and see if anything develops or we, we kind of dress it up a little bit.
Okay. Um, so the amount is $312,336.04.
All right, we also will be approving the resignation of Tommy Jacobson, Health Aid, effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year. Put the resignation of Sue Borgerson, care professional, effective at the end of the 2019-20 school year. Approve the resignation of Brian Chilin, uh, middle school, middle school tech ed, effective at the end of the 1920 school year. Approve the resignation of Devon Zimbleman, custodian, effective on September 18th, 2020. Will be approving the extracurricular coaches, um, cross-country coach, head coaches, Mike Anderson. Middle, middle school cross-country coaches, Mary Wilson, and, uh, cross-country volunteer assistant, Steve Williamson. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Sandy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any further discussion?
Sir, you were talking about these coaches and when the ones, the volunteer ones, so that's not a favor.
Correct, and cross-country is the only one that's having a full season. So they already, they have been in, in the middle, they're in the season.
Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries 6-0. All right, 9.1, lane changes. Um, it is in your packet, I believe, the lane changes, I can see about 20 of them. It's in one of my pieces of paper here.
It's in much. Quit keeping track as I was signing and going. But you know what? It's, it's a nice thing to see. Um, I mean, I'm not running a report, but, you know, when we get to the, uh, seniority list, it'll be interesting to see how many have their masters now. Because we've had quite a few staff that have worked their way to getting their masters done. And I think you've seen that when we had the negotiations, how many people are over past MA.
This is still twice a year or a deal?
Yes, it is. And, you know, so then it'll happen again, I think it's January, if I remember.
Yeah, something.
Do we have a motion to approve lane changes?
I'll move.
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Oop, second by Amy, I think. Uh, any further discussion? Any notice discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. 9.2, um, this is policies. Uh, this is the second reading of policy 509.1, tuition fees for enrollment of OVA state residents. 522, title, or title 9, sets non-discrimination policy grievance procedures and process. 602, organization of school calendar and school date. 611, homeschooling. 620, credit for learning. 624, online learning options. 721, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal reserve resources. Um, is there a motion? Simple. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, I think, uh, Sandy got that one. Uh, any discussion, any questions on any of these policies? Any notice discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. 9.3, um, this is a non-certified contract for Grace Fergock Food Service. 13.5 an hour, effective the start of the 2020-2021 school year. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Uh, is this in Dilworth or Linden?
Couldn't tell you.
I think it's in Linden. I can see a new face.
Okay.
I'm just in front.
All right, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. 9.4, non-certified contractor, um, for Val Mullumba, food service 15.1 an hour, effective the start of the 2020-2021 school year. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Sandy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any discussion?
She's in Dilworth.
She's in Dilworth, okay. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. 9.5, 2020 school board officers and committee represent, uh, representatives, do we have a motion?
Close.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Um, for clarification for the public, uh, since Raleigh resigned, we needed to, um, move the treasure position. Sandy has agreed to take that on, so thank you, Sandy. Uh, and then I sent you guys an email last night, um, but all we agree with for the public. Uh, Laura is now being added to operations and transportation. Uh, Amy will take over as the city of London Maison. Minnesota High School lead, David will, um, be the representative for that. Policy, Ronnie, you have been added to that. And then district operations committee, um, I don't think they meet a lot of Ronnie, but you're on there and Amy's your alternate. Um, Raleigh was also on the district oversight committee, but basically we had four of us that kind of intermingled that. So we will not be adding anybody else to that. So, um, any further discussion on these committees? Very good, thank you guys for stepping up and, um, taking, everybody taking a piece. So I greatly appreciate that, so.
Didn't have any choice in the policy that was approved.
You have the leaders in the whole show. I asked Brian, I asked Brian, I said, is Paul's taking a meet again in the next couple of months? He said, no, we have too many other things. I said, so Ronnie will be happy. That's why I strategically placed you there.
That's a volunteer.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed. Keep a pause around when you vote. Motion carries 6-0. All right, 9.6, this is a resolution. Um, we'll go ahead and get a motion and a second, and then I'll have Amy read it.
Some more.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All right, uh, Amy, the floor is yours.
All right, resolution appointing acting superintendent. Uh, whereas the district superintendent is responsible for the management of the schools and administration of school district policies. Whereas certain contracts and other documents must be signed or approved by the district superintendent on behalf of the district. Whereas the district superintendent, Brian Tigerson, may from time to time be unable to perform the superintendent duties due to health concerns. Whereas the district expects that any such absence of Mr. Tigerson will be temporary. And whereas in Mr. Tigerson's absen-, absence, the district must continue to operate, including entering into contracts and engaging in other actions that require a superintendent's signature or approval. Now therefore be resolved by the school board of special, the school board of school district number 2164, Derritland and Felton Public Schools as follows. One, the board hereby appoints Mr. Joe O'Keefe to act as the acting superintendent whenever such a time as the board determines that Mr. Tigerson is unable to perform his superintendent duties as outlined above. Mr. O'Keefe is licensed to act as a superintendent in the state of Minnesota. Mr. O'Keefe will perform the duties of, in Mr. Tigerson's absence, including executing all contracts or other documents on behalf of the district, which require a superintendent's signature or approval. Upon Mr. Tigerson's return to work from his absence, Mr. O'Keefe's appoint, appointment as acting superintendent shall end. At that point, Mr. Tigerson shall be solely responsible for performing superintendent duties on behalf of the district. This resolution will expire upon the expiration of Mr. Tigerson's 2021 contract. This resolution will expire upon the expiration of Mr. Tigerson's twenty twenty-one contract.
Okay, any further discussion? David, do you want to clarify it for anybody if they have any questions?
Uh, well, no, I just think it's, you know, just in case situation and, um, we just want to be prepared if such a situation should arise. So obviously talked to Brian about it and, um, I think it's in the best interest of school. It's a framing type of authority, I won't complain in that. Hopefully, we don't have to use it.
I agree. I think this is something moving forward as a board, even with an superintendent, um, this is always something we should have in place just because you never know when something could occur and we need to keep moving forward as a district, so. Um, thank you, David and Kevin Rock for working on that, I appreciate that, and thank you for, um, Joe for stepping in his team, so we appreciate that, so. All right, we'll go ahead, it's a resolution, so we'll have to do a roll call vote. We have Laura.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Myself, I, Sandy. Ronnie.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Nine point seven, non-certified contract, this is for Janay Mo, care professional, uh, fifteen fifty-six an hour effective the start of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Where, where will this one be?
Janay Mo, she's at the middle school.
Oh, middle school, okay.
And the next one is at the middle school.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, um, motion or, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries six zero. Nine point six, nine point eight, non-certified contract for Andrea Anderson, care professional, fifteen seventy-one an hour effective the start of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. We have a motion. So, motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries six zero. Nine point nine, COVID nineteen and structural program increase. Uh, this is something that was brought up in fiscal personnel, you'll notice that it's attached to the COVID nineteen, um, table. This is a one point O FTE for a certified position of distance learning liaison for six through twelve during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Uh, Brian, can you just clarify for the public what this, uh, position is about?
So, we know that when we look back last spring, um, what we did well, what we did okay, and what we maybe did not have a good plan for. Uh, because of the way it was done and we had lots of time to reflect it. And there were some decisions about, we really need to have a stronger support system in place for those kids that are in distance learning. So that we make sure that we don't have kids falling between tracks. And we already have these things set up at the elementary level, um, for some, for help working with kids. And whether it be the Wednesdays or, or, or what the case, we have a K one, a two, three, and a four, five person. And we were able to use some existing personnel for that. We do not have that same situation available at six, twelve hall. And what makes the six, twelve always unique is the fact that you typically got to have licenses in, in these different areas. So pulling somebody and then trying to fill theirs gets a little bit more difficult. So we had a discussion, uh, between Heidi, uh, really the whole admin cabinet discussing the fact, let's put, put these positions in place. Uh, the plan will be that we will hire this, we will advertise, you know, now that the position, if you approve the position. And we'll, uh, actually advertise for long-term sub-position. And the difference, because we're not hiring for a full one point O FTE for the year. When that COVID epidemic is done, um, then that position will go away because we won't have the kids in the distance mode. Uh, that's the difference between hiring it for long-term sub, if we actually run it for the full year. So that's why we'll be doing, we needed the position to create, advertise the long-term sub-position for, is a position has to exist.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries six zero. Uh, nine, nine point one zero, um, COVID nineteen and structural program increase. This is a one point O FTE, special education, distance learning position during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Uh, Mary Ann, you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, it's, um, kind of the same type of thing. We have, um, right around fifteen, sixteen students right now between the two elementaries that receive special services. And when I say special services, I, I took out the speech kids, that's not including our speech only kids that receive services because our speech teachers are the licensed people who can provide those services, so I wouldn't have someone else provide those services. But this would be for, you know, other academic or behavioral support that those people provide. And just looking at caseloads or caseloads, um, are at that point where it's kind of capacity anyway, and then if you're trying, in the elementary, if you're trying to do in-person teaching, plus you have, you know, three or four kids that are in caseload that are also distance learners, how do you balance that time within? Because those teachers still have to be at school during the contracted time, plus in-person, plus you're trying to reach your distance learners. And so having that teacher do all the distance learning, I would still have case managers, case manage those students and do the paperwork piece of it. But have, um, the person who's going to do distance learning, contact parents, contact students, do that contact person.
All right, great, thank you for the clarification. Any just, uh, questions for Mary Ann? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries six zero. Additional action items, ten point one, this is the, um, Minnesota EM memorandum of understanding with EM DGA. Um, did you, uh, does everybody have the, there's.
Everybody does.
Three pages, um, three page, this kind of little document here, these are the topics of conversation. David kind of went over that, um, went over that briefly in the fiscal personnel meetings, so let's go ahead and get a motion and a second, we'll have some discussion. Is there a motion? So, motion by David, is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Okay.
Well, wasn't Amy.
Yeah, wasn't Amy, could be her again. Okay, let's have a little discussion here, um, just for clarification purposes, um, coaching and advisors. And David's good at this, so I'm gonna let you talk and go through this one.
Sure, so I mean, some of the issues that come up, just how do we do compared to coaches, uh, during the, um, in the event that activities are canceled. Um, obviously we have fulfillment of, um, at least parts of the fall seasons, and so it's important to recognize that a lot of the coaches do work year-round. And so, um, to not pay them anything would not, not fair. So this is a proposal that came from, you know, from Brian Smurf of them to get to something that was agreeable. And so, uh, obviously we've got coaches that are coaching, um, like for instance, fall sports that are allowed now, those are, um, gonna be paid just normally. Uh, but where we have three weeks, uh, for the Minnesota high school leagues, uh, has allowed for the three weeks of a season's play, they're gonna be paid twenty-five percent now. And then, so we get the seven, remaining seventy-five percent of their corporate salary on the season. Um, you can see if there's some additional compensation also in, in situations if, um, if the season's canceled athletes. So, um, and there's also provisions in there with regard to middle school activity. There's provisions here with regard to subbing. And I don't believe Brian does better, and if you go through this, I don't know.
What, what's, what's nice about this and, and you, you've all heard, um, whether it be the administration or, or the, all of its teachers, everybody talking about it's hard to find subs. And one of our internal issues that we have is with the contract, um, people suffer each other, the middle school and high school, and really at high school level a lot because they've got the common, a little more the common belt system, where the middle school, you, you're off meds and all that between grades. So it doesn't work quite as well, but, so if I have, if I was a high school teacher and I had my prep sixth period and, and we need somebody to go in for so-and-so, and, and worst case scenario, you can't find subs, so you do it all internal. Everybody that has a prep first, second, third, fourth, fifth, you can find all of those people, they each, uh, sub for that hour during their prep, and then they earn extra. Um, and the problem, uh, the only option in the past in the contract is that they can earn some comp time that then can be turned into more personal. So you're compounding the problem because now you're creating more need for subs. So this is a motivator, and that's one of the reasons that when you look at this, this idea, the, the one and a half hours, well, what it really comes down to is normally they work six periods, they get a day. So now we're just saying, you know what? This will make it five, so the little incentive to take this one instead and not create more subbing issues for us. So, uh, you know, this is one of those where I feel, you can get MOU language that's a win-win, and this to me is a win-win and a help subbing issue. I think the same thing can be said, you know, even with the leave on the next one. Uh, those of you who worked the negotiations, uh, we've had these sickly requests from both MSBA negotiations and, uh, in discussions with certified in the past over time I've been here about sick leave things. And if there was ever a time to try it, um, and, you know, we've got some legitimate issues for staff members. Um, you, you think of the fact that if, if you're a fairly new teacher in our system, and you're gonna get sixteen days or fifteen days, whatever it is, um, as far as for, uh, your, your amount of sick leave in the year. Um, the fact that one COVID occasion, if you happen to have more than one person in your house, you got, you got ten and fourteen, you got twenty-four days. So that brand-new teacher is gonna go in the hole and take non-pay. They're gonna use up their personally, their sick leave, all that they can accumulate, and some non-pay if it ends up affecting it that far. So this is, you have to, if you look at the details, you have to get to the point of exhausting your sick leave before you can tap into the bank. So this isn't the case of somebody that's got three, four hundred dollars, and all of a sudden they've got COVID and they want to tap into the bank. This is restricting it only to being the ones that absolutely have no sick. So it's, it's done at many other schools. Um, and if there was, like I said, if there was ever a time with, with COVID being an issue, what a perfect time to try it. And again, it's a one-year contract, and that's why we thought, let's put it into an MOU for this one. And the last couple, uh, that you have classroom time, um, I, I think that is, is something that's good to have in an MOU because, uh, just like, uh, you know, our, our teachers are, are doing things over and above what we normally ask as far as, I mean, typically that was sacred time to me when I was also teaching. Go in the morning, get your last copies, they'll typically have paras in the classrooms, what else that, they go make their own. And so you get that lovely lineup with about six people all lined for the same thing, and maybe they're just waiting because it's sent it all to the printer in court to the copy, but you, you have that thing, that kind of stuff going on. So because of the safety and security of kids, we are needing to have the kids go to classrooms so that they're not congregating. And because of that, then we're, we're having our people, all of our staff, and this came right through the leadership teams. So they've agreed to do it, but because it's over and above, they just want to have it in there that, okay. Administration, just because we're doing this, you are going to continue to look for solutions, aren't you? That's legitimate. It's no different than some of the things we put into the bedroom, you know, for motivators to make sure that everybody's looking for. And the last one was just on the sick leave, the fact, uh, again, very legitimate request, you're a new teacher, you get eight right away. And then the rest of them you get over the course of the nine months. Well, if you know you're gonna get the sixteen in the first class, and if you quit in the middle of the year, you gotta pay that, you know, different things that people use. So just give the whole sixteen right away. No biggie.
Just so everyone knows that this is, this MOU is just an effect of this calendar year, so. And really thanks to the BDFPM for, uh, making those calls, so these are very helpful, um, I'd say all of them are very helpful to, uh, what we're trying to do.
And the executive council approved it today, they voted. So once you pass it down, Brooke and I will work on, uh, getting that BOU and get the signatures this week, so we'll all pass this tonight.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, so we have a motion by Amy, a second by David, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries six zero. Ten point two, this is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one transport, transportation contracts. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Ronnie. Um, all contracts are, were, should have been on your table. Um, thank you to the transportation, uh, negotiators, and also thank the bus vendors for, um, their patience during this time and, and really coming to the table and working with, uh, the school district to provide good care for kids and getting their safety. Uh, any more discussion on it? Any more questions?
I mean, I don't know, you know, the problem's been a bit, um, you know, folks might have a thought that, you know, certain activities, you know, where the people are being paid for things they're not doing, but understand uh, these folks have a lot of, uh, funds and capital invested into theirs and to the process, we don't. And so, uh, but we've got a really symbiotic relationship with them, we have to, um, make sure that that continues. And so this is really partnership with them, they're sticking with us and we're sticking with them.
In general, it's a, it's basically a three percent increase on, on the rates. Um, and they're putting in language and, and rates for when we're in distance mode, which, when we're in distance mode is, you know, it's, it's helping them make the payments and, and the people that they. You know, same way we've got contracted people, many of them have hired people, and they're expecting, they want to keep them for the next year or as COVID is done. They won't be there otherwise, and then we're in trouble. So we've got vested interest in making sure that they stay viable as, as companies. Uh, and it's, it isn't costing any more money, it's actually in those distance mode, we're, we're saving some costs. So I, it, it's critical that we, we get this done, and, and I think it's a very fair, uh, very fair contract for me, for both, for both sides.
Okay, and even in distance mode, I mean, even though they're getting fifty percent, they're taking hit with this, they're basically not making any profit. They just kind of brought up too, that at least three out of the four have younger ones still coming into the system, you know, that they plan to be with us for years yet, so. We've always had good contracts, usually.
Yeah, I agree. So this, uh, we have a motion by David, a second by Ronnie, to approve the contracts for center of transportation LLC, beach bussing LLC, center of transportation incorporated, and heel of service incorporated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries six zero. Uh, eleven, uh, board comments, future agenda, uh, next week, I just want to remind board members, we have a meeting with MSBA, um, class from six to eight in the high school year. Media center for our superintendent search, does everybody have that on their calendar?
Monday night?
The twenty-first, twenty-first, I'm sorry.
Next month.
Next month. I've lost my mind, guys. I've lost it. Um, twenty-first, next Monday night, meeting here, six o'clock, six to eight o'clock.
What do we have to have prepared for that one? Are you supposed to go through that checklist thing or something?
Bring the book that she, um, bring that book, uh, the superintendent search that you guys received last time. I will reach out to Barb to make sure there's anything else we need to prepare. Um, Brooke submitted, um, today, she submitted a form to MSBA to start looking on, um, kind of, uh, a rough draft that she will bring to us next week, uh, the brochure for hiring of the superintendent. I had sent her an email from us, board members about points of pride, and we received fourteen. So to, from staff members to, to the, to the, um, the pamphlet that's being developed, so I was very happy to see that, so, um, that'll be good. So we'll be able to review that next Monday night.
Just for homework a little bit, I guess, if you do have points of pride that you want to add to that or have, you know, brought to the discussion with our, on Monday night, to have those ready to. Just for homework a little bit, I guess, if you do have points of pride that you want to add to that, or have, you know, brought to the discussion with our on Monday night, to have those ready too.
And I thought we were supposed to go through that checklist about what's most important, you know, those different items.
Yeah, she did.
I'll email her tomorrow and clarify, and I'll email the five of you.
This is just board listening and working with them, I mean, it's not all their stakeholders at this time.
No, it's just us, just the five, or just the six of us, yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have one more meeting night, or maybe two, we need to get going on M S C A negotiations. I've got to get ahold of Chiama Jones, they've been so patient, I, I mean, she's, she's emailed me three times, and, and I'm going to email her back, recall her and say, look, this is dates. So here's what I need to know from those that are on negotiations. She wants to know, and we talked about Mondays through Thursdays, not trying to do a Friday, not trying to do Sundays, so the week of the twenty-first through the twenty-fourth, we know the twenty-first now is out. Um, but those of you that are on that commit, and that is what?
You three, Amy, Laura, David.
Okay, so whether we do it afterwards, I just would like to get, to me, if we get some of these things on record, even with the, at the public meetings still, then I'd leave, because these are open again, if you want a team, attempt. What I need is, tell me when you look at your calendars, of those next two weeks, Monday through Thursday, which ones could you do? And then that way, hopefully, I can come up with one or two nights, one each week, possibilities.
The week of the fourteenth and the week of the twenty-first?
Well, next Monday is the twenty-first, so the twenty-first through twenty-fourth, or the twenty-eighth through October first.
Twenty-eighth of that board meeting, too.
Yeah, and the question would be then, would you want to do it as an option if we moved up, if we did have a committee meeting, and, and we did the board meeting, let's say at five thirty, um, to be able to get that done at seven and then do negotiation? That would be the only way we could get that right, um, most likely, unless you're all available in the afternoon or mornings and, and what else, not, but then I've got staff members that don't want to do that. So it's going to have to be evening, I think is the only way. Um, but if, if there's some other nights next week that look like they're open for the three of you, you tell me common nights that at least, that we can at least try to pinpoint a couple. The twenty-second is, is it out for any of the three of you?
I'm good.
Okay, so it's good for all, twenty-third?
Uh, sure, it's me.
Okay, so let's kick that, let's kick off the twenty-third and thirty. And then twenty-fourth on Thursday?
I'm good.
Okay, and the following week, twenty-eighth, we're going to, let's, let's leave that one out, it should be only, he had either Tuesday or Thursday, um, both the twenty-ninth and October first. Laura, what does it look for you?
Beach, thirty.
I would prefer not the thirty, just because we have beach, so.
The, but the thirtieth we won't, because that's a Wednesday.
Oh, the twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth would, it's, yeah, because once we hit October, we always run into this.
Yeah, I guess.
Is the twenty-ninth available? And we may not need both weeks.
I'm good for twenty-ninth. Twenty-ninth.
Okay. Thank you very much, that will save me a little bit, because they have been so patient.
All right, our next board meeting is scheduled Monday, September twenty-eighth, um, there will be operations committee meeting at five, if Brian gives so, we'll let Ronnie and Laura and Amy know if we need to have that, and then, uh, meeting is at six P M. All right, we need to.